When we post our endorsement so that readers can can see it as well. Okay. Okay, so why don't you start out if you would just telling us a little bit about kind of your your past tenure with council and some of the accomplishments you're proud of and why you you want to stick around for another term?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Amy. So looking back, I got elected in late nineteen and had to go to work right away. For that was for replacing for two years for when Kate Larson resigned. And and then covid happened and that was fun. Man, we muddled through that the best we could. And then in twenty and then, of course, I had to run again in twenty one for my fourth for my first four year term. And here I am right now, running for hopefully my second four year term. So some of the great accomplishments, I feel like we've gotten really good hold of is when we was the covid. That was that was a really kind of a chaotic mess when you really look back through that whole ordeal. You just didn't know what was going on and it was just coming at you so fast and we were trying to just just work through it as we could. I'm I'm happy with how we handled that whole thing with well with the whole pandemic the best we could. One thing that I was I'm I'm proud of, but I know citizens. It is what it is. I I feel like we saved a good number of lives by putting that mask mandate in place. Because that gave people the opportunity to at least feel that they're doing something productive and I thought it was productive. So moving forward, then, of course, across from my house is the lovely Comiskey Park. Phase one was completed. That was a real big push to see that happen. I'm really happy with that. And been happy with a lot of our progress that's been going on on Central Avenue, for example. We've known that I well, I know that this was going to be a one and a two kind of building at a time process where one building will get remodeled and another and another and another. And now that the city finally has full jurisdiction over Central and White Avenue. That allows developers to actually shut down portions of the street or divert traffic. To actually do really nice things with with those buildings. So I'm I'm proud of how that progress is going. And how we intend to expand that as well. Ah, let's see what else. There's been other things over the years. It kind of just blurs together some days. So.
Yeah, so tell tell us what you're you're like to what's on your to do list, I guess, in the in the coming years. Rather than hang it up here, you probably feel like there are some things you'd like to see through or maybe.
Yes, 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 yes. One for sure is we know Eagle Point Park is in dire need of some attention. Many citizens have been telling me that for years. It's been I've been advocating to get it as like a higher priority. I'm glad that once we get that master park plan back from those from that firm, we'll have a better idea of what really needs to get done. Although personally, as a as a former contractor, it was fairly obvious. The buildings need rehabbing, the splash pad needs to be redone or the plumbing and the plumbing needs to be done to it. I'm not an arborist or a tree guy, so I know about a month ago I did a walk with the trees forever and they had an arborist there and we looked at multiple trees and the issues that were going on with them. Some of those trees, for example, are like we've got oak wilt wilt oak wilt going on. And what that's doing is it's killing clumps of trees together. And so I envision this as basically we would have to cut down those trees and replant. But we've also got a lot of invasive species that need to be addressed. So that's another big thing. I know I've been a big advocate for rehabbing Central and White. I know that's going to be moving forward some more because that was stalled by my predecessor, which really upset me. And then, of course, covid slowed us down and now here we are getting getting caught back up with it finally. So I'm I'm appreciative of that and I'm looking forward to how that'll come about. So and of course, big infrastructure projects we've got, we agreed at goal setting to refocus on the B branch projects that kind of got shuttered, so to speak, or or slowed down. So we know Kaufman needs to be worked on. We also know that down on Locust Street really needs a lot of attention, particularly Seventeenth and Locust, where it just turns into a it turns into a river or a very fast moving river there. There's even people who basically have a game where let's get our out our kayaks and see how fast we can do some paddling. So we know we've got stormwater issues in that in this side of the neighborhood, but also going out west as well. We need to keep working on that, too.
Okay, you know, one of the issues impacting your ward and that we were we've heard a lot about is the is the union at the Marina project and you know, some folks, including your opponent in this election, say that a lot of the people in your ward are not happy about it. And I guess like to hear is that is that your impression from from constituents that you've spoken to? Kind of why did you support that and where do you see that headed?
That's that's fair, Amy. And honestly, that has been the other issue that a number of citizens have been talking to me about and the city had produced a handout that I've been I printed off and paid for myself and I added some additional information like the square footages of the apartments. And that was useful, but that's been really good. There was a lot of misconception as usual rumor mill fear. Change is scary for a number of citizens. They don't like the idea of these big imposing apartments. But then again, I've had a number of citizens reach out to me who literally said, you know, I like it. It looks nice. It'll be really nice. Once the idea that this isn't going to be a and I'm going to put this in air quotes, a project like everybody believes it is, they understand that half of it's for workforce housing. So the people living there have to make us job have to have a job and they have to make like thirty five thousand on up. And that's been more relieving to folks. But it is amazing the number of seniors that still want to sell their homes and move into this place because of the because of the nursing home look backs. The more seniors I've been talking to, the more they're thinking about like, I can't maintain my home anymore. It's too much or it's too big and they just want to get out of their house and live someplace nice. That's been the thing. And so one of the reasons that I voted for it was I wanted something nice in our neighborhood. That's always been the kind of thing that is I've always had this. There's a bit of resentment from citizens of like, why does everything nice happen on the north on the west end? Why does everything nice happen somewhere else? And it's like, well, we can have nice things. And so I predict it will be a very nice project in the end. I do find it ironic that my opponent is such against it, considering in fact his company, though, that he works for is an investment company that wants to build rental units as well. So I just find that interesting that that's kind of their equity idea of that that they would be against something like that, but is what it is. So.
And do you feel like the city has the infrastructure in place for that in terms of sidewalks and and anything else that might be needed when you have that kind of an influx of of people living there?
So that's where like we've been advocating, we've been working on replacing some stormwater lines that in that area directly. And there are, there may not be sidewalks, but I'll have to double check if it's part of the development agreement. They might have to put in sidewalks. We do have a bus lane. The sad and frustrating part of everybody's like, oh, it's a food desert. I've been harping that it's been a food desert in my entire neighborhood since twenty nineteen. I've seen what happens when we have convenience stores go up, when gas stations go under, and that's what's been happening. The bank at twenty, the a former little bank at Twenty Second Street is now another convenience store. We don't need another convenience store. We've got plenty of those. And so one of the things that I'm trying to push for is like a moratorium on convenience stores as well as like liquor stores in the neighborhood particularly in the North End and the Point area, because it's just we have got enough of them. We don't need any more. The biggest thing when we look at trying to get in businesses and trying to get in retail businesses is demographics. And when my neighborhood unfortunately is mainly on a just it's it's considered a distressed neighborhood. Meaning that we are on the poorer end of things. We will not get retail. We will not get a grocery store until we can get some more income in the neighborhood. And I've been explaining that to a number of folks and they understand it because they themselves are retired and they understand that they aren't really contribute. They are contributing to society by paying their taxes, but they're not they're not enticing businesses to move into our neighborhoods.
Amy, can I ask a quick question on that? Update Danny, do you feel that there is a better or higher use or more appropriate use of that property? Where Union Marina is going, it's been, I guess I'd say suggested or alleged that, you know, others have wanted to build there and haven't been able to and this is not a state company that's developing it. You know, have we been has the city been fair and forthcoming in terms of opportunities for others to build?
Yeah. So when we look at like developers, we have a portfolio. The city has a portfolio of properties that we just present to everybody and be like, where would you like to build your project? They were given the same incentives we've given any other developer. Nothing special was given. I know my competitors saying that we did, but no, we've all they've got the same agreement. But I get what you're saying, Bob, about the fact that, yes, this was public land. But also, no one has used the land. As long as I've been on council, no one has approached city council about use about purchasing this land for anything else. I had heard before my time that there was somebody who wanted to put private condos on that. But that was before my time, so I don't know who that individual was. And I don't believe that would have been a fair to folks. It's it's change that scares most of my neighbors. It's the change of we don't know who these folks are that are going to be living in there. And that's really what the biggest upriff is. I understand that the fireworks happen there. I've gone to them, too. But the fireworks can be moved and they have been moved before. And so I'm working with the DRA because I'm on that board. And I'd like and we're and I'm trying to propose that, why don't we just move them to the new amphitheater? Make a community day of it at the at the new amphitheater. As once a year, it invites the whole community down. There wouldn't be an issue with parking. There's more than enough parking in that parking lot there. So that's kind of the other issue is folks like, oh, the fireworks, the fireworks. It's like, that is one event a day. Otherwise, the place sits idle all year round.
Thanks, thanks.
Yeah, another huge topic that that the city has has been dealing with quite a bit is is air service. I wonder if you have a different take on that from people in your neighborhood in terms of how much money the city should devote to it or kind of what that looks like for you.
Yeah, so sadly and frustratingly, it's I I so many of my neighbors have just said, no, don't support it. Please stop supporting it. It is a waste of our money. I I agree and I disagree, but I also, in the end, the number of citizens that I've talked to, it's been three hundred plus people and they've easily said, stop supporting it. It's not worth it. So I I do intend to, when we vote on it again, to not, because the sad part is is as I mentioned to these folks, once Denver Air leaves, there is no other airline waiting in the wings. There is nobody else out there. Nobody's going to come in and succumb to us. The thing is customers' spending habits or our citizens' spending habits have changed. They would prefer to drive to Cedar Rapids, to Moline, to Madison, and they would prefer to get on more of a direct flight. Folks just don't want to do a layover in Chicago. Even though I've argued the economics of like, well, you have to drive, you have to pay for parking. And it's your time. So is it worth you to just drive and pay a little more to fly out of Dubuque? And unfortunately, that hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars to them is not worth it. Even though the other day I talked to a gentleman who went on a little vacation, he went on one of those Alaskan cruises, so he had to get out to Seattle. So he he didn't. He just said it was a hundred and fifty dollars difference for him exactly. Because if it was either to fly out of Dubuque or fly out of Madison, so he did Madison to Denver to Seattle. And then his way back was Madison, Minnesota, Minnesota, and then Matt, I'm sorry, Seattle, Madison, Minnesota. But he still had to pay for parking. He still had to drive. And I think in the end, he saved about seventy five dollars worth of difference because of the parking. So. But like I said, folks feel they would rather go, they they say they'd rather to fly out of somewhere else and that's probably how I will be voting on it is it's it's frustrating, but that's what my constituents have told me.
So is that kind of your approach to things that you would vote the way your constituents feel? That they want you to vote as opposed to maybe what you how you view the greater good?
Well, I view the greater good as importance, but also when I like this union on Marina thing, even though this was discussed publicly, citizen, there's been so much feedback about this that it had just, it's not that I did that I'm not happy that we voted for that. I view that in one to five to ten years, it'll be a wonderful project. And it'll work out nice and it'll be fine. The thing with the airport, though, is folks just don't want to spend the money. That's the problem is they just don't want to spend the money. And if that's how they're going to be, they're going to shop with their wallet. And sometimes when you look at that is that this is how a business operates, this is how competition operates, folks spend with their wallet. So that's kind of how I feel about it. Although I personally feel it'll still pass on council. That I know Brad will advocate for it, Rick will advocate for it, probably Katie and Susan more than likely, and I would assume Laura would too. So it'll still move forward. But that'll be where it'll be at this point. So.
Okay. Uh, go ahead. If any of you guys want to jump in.
I I can go. You know, one of the hi, Amy, one of the the big pieces of of news that's come out in the last few months is related to Mike Van Milligan's announcement that he plans to retire in the next couple of years. So the folks who are elected will be part of that conversation. And I'm curious about your thoughts on, you know, what do you want to see in the next city manager, both kind of, you know, personal skills and quality, but also, you know, it's been we've had Mike Van Milligan has been here for a very long time. Do you want to see somebody kind of continue the the sort of work he does? Are you looking for somebody who can bring something different to the table? What what do you see as kind of what we deem that next person?
Yeah. It's interesting because I, as somebody who's younger, who's a, and I call myself an elder millennial because I technically am. We are our entire generation has had to work with folks that were just waiting for them to, so to speak, retire. And so I've been nicely asking the city manager, Mike, every every time with every time about a week before we do his annual review. Because people's lives change regardless of things of like, so what's your thoughts on or what's your plan on retirement? And I'm not. And at that time, I was never pushing him out. It was more the idea of we have to plan for this, like this has to be a process. Because he he the city manager, Mike, is so involved in so many things and knows so many things and has a longevity and history of so many things. We can't just bring in somebody and just be absent minded. Because this was a big issue back in two thousand nineteen. So I've thought about this for a long time, like we need to have somebody who has a good understanding of how how our federal partners work and also is willing to understand or willing to really learn how our private partnerships work, because that's a huge thing that a lot of our our city has. That's how we got a lot of things done. So I'm I would be looking for somebody like that as well as somebody who has a minor understanding of how major nonprofits work because we have a lot in this community. And it's one of the rarities of our of the county and city of itself, the amount of nonprofits and what they do and help people. So I would be looking for somebody who's got some understanding in all three of those aspects particularly. And it might be somebody from a major city that wants to step back and do something a little easier and maybe somebody from within. I'm going to be more intrigued as to the number of applicants that we get because I'm going to assume it's going to be a lot. I'm I would easily guess over a hundred. On my personal LinkedIn page, I've had a number of people reach out to me that are in business that are in different levels of of municipalities across the country all of a sudden that have like, oh, you're on the city council. Let's try to be friends with you and follow you and see what you're doing. So clearly, when Mike made his announcement and with your help of broadcasting it, it basically it's it's hit a national level already. So I'm I'm assuming we'll have a a vast pool of applicants applying. So it'll be it'll be very interesting how we weed those out. And so I'm I'm looking forward to it when we get to that point.
And Mike, Mike, my other question part of that was, do you think, you know, the next city manager that you want to kind of continue a lot of the same priorities that the current city manager has, or do you think that you'd like somebody who can you know, take a different tack to do some different different things?
I'm yeah, thank you for reminding me that. So I would say I would expect them to at least for a few years, try to continue the direction that we're in because, one, it takes that long for so many of these projects to be completed. It's it'd be like if we were building a bridge and all of a sudden halfway through, we had to change the whole people. Well, we still have to finish this bridge. We still have to keep going. So that would be what I would expect. But yeah, I would be interested to see somebody's a a little different style where there is maybe a mixture of a mixture of kind of like they want. As usual, it'd be nice to see somebody slightly younger, but not probably somebody in their midish fifty, early fifties would probably be a good idea in my brain. Somebody who's got about twenty plus years of managing a city would be nice or ten or fifteen. The sad part is is somebody will probably want to be with us for only a short time and then it'll probably have to be this process will probably happen again. I've been going through with my church, for example, we we had a long leadership for a long time. And then we've had a new pastor, and then we had a new pastor, and then we had another new pastor, and now we're going to have what's called an interim. An interim basically makes you holds a mirror to yourself and says, hey, these are all the things you guys are kind of doing wrong, because it's a total outsider looking in mentality. And and that would be something that I would be looking for. Somebody who's willing to say, hey, these are the things that I feel your your cover your your city could be changing. I wouldn't mind somebody who would be willing to challenge us on things.
I mean, that kind of goes hand in hand with some of what we're seeing in in this election cycle. Some of the folks that have stepped forward are specifically vocal about taking things in a different direction. You know, maybe some opposition to to Mike Van Milligan and some some of his leadership style and kind of how how the the city works with businesses and developers and that sort of thing. Obviously, that's an issue that's been been around for a bit. Where where do you feel that I guess things stand with that now? Do you think there is significant change needed to to improve the working relationship with people wanting to to build or expand developments here in Dubuque?
Yeah, so I've always I appreciate the question, Amy. So the I'm not chuckling at, but I'm chucking at the the story, the the actor, the little phrase I'm about to use. It's called kicking the tires. And here's what I'll get at. So I left construction in March to transition to working with my folks on the farm, which has been a lovely experience. But prior to that, I worked for Gizi Commercial Roofing where we we basically would look at I I meet with building owners, property owners, business managers and such at their commercial property, whether it's even their houses even. And we would talk about things and I would specifically have, I would be like, let's switch gears now. We've done talking about your roof. We're looking at the beautiful view of where your building's standing. And I'd be like, you do realize my other job, right? They're like, oh, yeah, you're on city council. I'm like, okay. And sometimes people would just wait and breathe and then be like, oh, I want to talk to you about this thing. So I'm like, okay, great. So we'd have a conversation about whatever issue was going on or whatever their construction issue was or their building issue or whatever. And I always called it the kicking the tires moment where you're you've kicked the tires and you're negotiating with the salesman. And I have no problem with that. When there is this notion that that business folks can't reach out to us, I think that's weird. When we're very public, we're out in the public. I know I am out in the public all the time. And I've got no problem with folks calling me and just talking to me or sending me an email and then I'll respond back and say, hey, well, if you want to have a deeper conversation, here's my phone number, give me a call. And sometimes I get phone calls and sometimes I don't. What I think the impression that this opposition group is that they're basically asking for is they want carte blanche on things. That's the impression that I'm getting. That they want businesses to have carte blanche and the role of government is to, yeah, but give them a lot of leeway with things, but also kind of keep them in check because that's what we do. We've got but building codes for a reason. We can only do so much with so much money that we have from taxes. We can if the city is expanding one direction, but your property is like over here and we somehow have to connect utilities, well, we just can't do that. We've got to figure out it's going to take a while. And that's, I think, the frustrating thing is is and I've even noted it and trust me, it is frustrated me at the council meetings where we just can't seem to be like, can we just move a little faster on this issue? Like, come on, let's go. And so that's the one thing that I've always stressed in goal setting is the less amount of goals we have, the faster we can get them done. So I was impressed when our city manager gave us the approval to do more goals and we're like, okay, if you think you have the bandwidth to do this, then we'll 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 give you some big goals. And going back to like the stormwater stuff that we have to do just in the north, just in like the downtown and purple, sorry, downtown, like Seventeenth and Locust, because that goes from Locust all the way up to Senior and then Kaufman goes all the way to Kaufman to practically the Sisters of Presentation. So there's a lot to do with that stuff and it's not just gonna take like a week to get going. It's gonna take a little time to get all this figured out. So.
Just to follow up on that, Danny. You know, I I think a lot of folks recognize that the role of government is to work with developers, provide resources via partner and that there's a balance between giving them what they want, say they need versus being good stewards of taxpayer dollars and 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 priorities. And so there's kind of a it's a continuum or a spectrum, right? I mean, do you feel like we have the right balance of that in Dubuque or that we need to be a little bit more developer friendly or less developer friendly or we're right or in the sweet sweet spot because that can be lots of different look lots of different ways.
Yeah, yeah. I I hear what you're saying. It can, but I also think that we've gotten to a really nice place with our incentive packages. Where we've given where we're trying to give the TIP financing, it used to be fifteen or it used to be ten, that's fifteen. So that's been a useful tool, but I also realized that it seems these last four years have just been with the finances of the world. So roller coastery and up and down, up and down. That developers want to do something, like you guys wrote that lovely article the other day about the Talon project. And that guy bought that land. Gosh, I think twenty years ago and he just sat on it and it's like, okay, you're gonna move forward? And then he approached us three years ago and he's finally moving forward. A project that I know upsets me, which I've talked with the city manager about, which I'm hoping we're going to get some traction on is if you don't, if we if if the city starts, if we sell you land, you have to do something with it in like three to four years. If you don't, it's back to us because there's a project sitting down there. I've drawn a blank on it. It's right by the parking ramp for the Diamond Joe. It's this weird L shaped lot that's really tight. It was like supposed to be hotels or no, it was going to be that.
There's apartment project and then there's this, I think the hotel project's another one.
Yeah, it was going to be apartments and it was almost going to be seven stories and it wasn't going to touch. And we approved this a while ago, like five years. It it is like butts right up to the backside of the parking ramp. And it's weird little L shaped lot. We sold it to this guy, this developer, and then covid happened and it's just it's like, what are you doing? You you're gonna build something? You're not? I mean, if if they're not, I want my land back. That's how I feel. I want the city to have its land back. Because it's it should be used. It should be turned into something. The hotels, yes, I do want to see those happen because it's amazing like what we learned with that whole ordeal with just during Labor Day weekend of the amount of field dreams when they met, when they max capacity out there. Where's where are these folks going to stay? I talked to another developer who has land out at the Pasty area, well, more Eppworth, take it back, Eppworth. And he said to me, he he talked about the idea of a hotel, but there's, it would be dumb to put it there because there's nothing for folks to do in Eppworth. So he would rather do something else entirely. So he looked at putting like a small hotel there because of the whole, because there's nothing out of there as well. And he thought, oh, we're right in the middle of everything. But I said, no one's gonna want to stay there. And he agreed because there's just, it'd be it'd be bad because there's nothing to do. So now I definitely want to see the more of that hotel project move forward. That's another one that's kind of lagging as well, so.
So switching gears, Danny, earlier you were talking about feedback from your constituents on the airport and that you're hearing that people just don't want the city to invest in that. So talk about what your outreach to your constituents looks looks like. How are you? How are you staying in in touch with your constituents and a little bit to what Amy mentioned earlier? What's what's driving Danny's thought process?
Yeah.
With the big picture or what my constituents are telling me?
So it's a bit of both. When I look at stuff, Mike, I look at stuff like, what will this look like a year from now, five years and 10 years from now? Because once after 10 years, it's kind of like, oh, it's been here forever. And when I mentioned 10 years is I talked to people about like, do you remember what the Millwork District used to be like? Like, you didn't go down there. Like, it was, it wasn't great. It was bad. It was scary. And when you start talking, when you start reminding people, they like, oh, yeah. That was kind of a bad, that was kind of a dive. I'm like, yeah. I mean, that's the nicest word. There's been other words used. But that's just, that's just it. So that's how I I try to think of things like, what will it look like a year from now, five years and 10 years from now? So in outreach, I'm involved in three neighborhood associations. The Northern Neighborhood Association, which is, which meets like down in the in my neighborhood. The Point, as well as Alpine Mobile Home Park. And I help them form because of the whole corporate stuff going on so that they way they can kind of organize and actually talk to each other. So I talk to those folks. I will dive into the comment sections of a couple of things on social media, just to sometimes raise my blood pressure and sometimes not. But I mainly try to go to social events. I try to go to church functions. Anything that's happening in the neighborhood, if there's like a trick or treat thing that's gonna happen, like a Crescent Community Health Center, I go around, I talk to folks. I just try to get everything accessible. Campaigning is different because here I am, I'm out literally knocking doors. Like today, before I I just finished my lunch and then talking with you, I was door knocking since 8:30 this morning. So I just talk to constituents when I see them. But I generally keep a core group of like 20 citizens that I talk to that are of various ages where they're about 25 to about 85 that are in just different income stratifications to give me a good idea about things. And my church is very my church is First Congregational, United Church of Christ at Tenth and Locust. That Sunday service is usually, we have coffee afterwards, and so I'll have a group of seniors that'll talk to me there. I volunteer with the MFC, so I might be talking to youth about ideas, to brainstorm ideas like teens are having like, if you had like a bunch of, if we had unlimited money, how could we make this place awesome for you so you can have more of your friends here? Volunteer my organization with the with with the DRA is interesting because you're kind of dealing with nonprofits a lot. So I talk to a lot of different nonprofits. I'm part of a nonprofit that my husband and a group of us created, DBQ Pride for the LGBTQ plus community. So that's been interesting to learn more about that. So I'll talk with the community foundation folks to get better ideas. So it's, it's, people ask me like, oh, you do a lot of talking. I'm like, yeah, that's what I do, because that's how I get feedback on things. And but when you're campaigning, you're specifically talking one on one on people's front door. And you're just asking them the issues because I literally, I literally say who I am. You know, I'm your elected councilman. I'm asking for your support. Is there any issues you want to talk to me about since I'm standing right here? And they have a list, and it seems to be the three things are the airport, the Eagle Point Eagle Point Park, and the Union at the Marina. So those have been the big three things. And then that comes down to, I've got like, I go through my notes here. That's why I keep this, this is what I was talking to. The bigger things has been, let's see. Trying to figure out like, because of Alpine, that's a big issue to me, figuring out that. Eagle Point Park, like I said, everybody wants flowers. Trying to connect people with more businesses. Everybody wants something at the PAC site and the Flex Steel site. And I will ask, well, what what do you want to see in particular? A grocery store has been a huge thing because Eagles just rakes everybody over the coals. And I'll go into Eagles and you'll stand there and you'll walk out with less than what you're hoping your dollar will go. But mainly, everybody that goes in and out of Eagles is literally walking in and out of there. Everybody always wants more more police presence in the community because it's just we're short cops and we have that conversation. The night, the discussion of things for youth to do with the sports complex idea is is starting to take hold. I've had that conversation for years. Folks have said, oh, remember there used to be this roller rink and there was an arcade? And I said, well, I don't remember an arcade, but I'd heard of the roller rink. And I said, I sadly didn't go to it. But there's just, there seems to be this idea that we need things for youth to do, and I'm in agreement with that. If we can figure out how to keep it sports tourism or e-tourism. If we can figure out the sports complex idea and a location. And it might be multiple spots, just because you can't build something massive like I think it's called BTK and the Davenport Molleen area. That's that's huge. We we can't support something that big, but something smaller. So one gentleman yesterday morning mentioned I should take a look at. Because I said, I like pictures and ideas and where was it? Oh, Fort Dodge has got a really nice softball field complex. Burlington has an inflatable. And of course, Badendorf, but if there is an idea that we could maybe mesh fields and in some type of inflatable space would be would be really cool. I just, once again, don't know where that would be, so. And then like last night, I had lovely conversations with different folks that are part of the chamber because the chamber did cocktails and candidate forum. So where just each candidate had three minutes to give a stump speech, and then we talked to who was there. And I know the Y is really interested in trying to figure something out, like maybe there's an idea that we could merge what we want to do and what they want to do so we could have like water park or an indoor pool space, maybe an outdoor aquatic space, and maybe maybe baseball fields all combined. I'm like, hey, you got the land and you can figure out where it could go. This would be really cool.
Danny, I want to return to a comment you made earlier about the city council priority, strategic planning and prioritization and talk about maybe, you know, having too many goals and making it difficult to achieve, you know, any of others because of lack of bandwidth or focus. Do you feel like that what comes out of those sessions is 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 specific enough in terms of planning and timelines and budgets and who the partners might be? In other words, is it is it too vague, or does it need to be more specific? Or do you think it's an appropriate level of of detail?
It's kind of the start of the entirely big complicated process of what what you want to do with these big goals. But I also know they've been on, some of them have been, what I like to say, on the back burner for a while. So the fact, I like the fact that it used to be, our goal session used to be like Monday, it'd be like a Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. The fact that we've taken now it's Monday, Tuesday and a Thursday that that gives staff, I think, a lot more time to kind of digest and process this idea. But I also think it's also kind of been in the back of staff's mind that like, ooh, if we could do that, let's make it happen. And so like the B branch thing, I remember when that, when I first bought our, when we bought our house in 08, and then they talked about the B branch, I think in 10 or 11? That was when I can't remember when Obama got out of office. That whole project was, there was a big map for that. So there's a lot of that parts and pieces that have just kind of been sitting there idle, waiting to be picked back up. So I think that'll move forward decently. But if something were to go bad sideways, not that, but somewhere else. We might have to pause what we're doing and pick it back up again. Like, I wouldn't, I don't know what would go bad, but just, you just never know, like, say. I know three years ago, going into goal setting, we had not intended to talk about air service, and then it became the topic of our entire thing. And that was a goal then, and it'll probably still remain, it's still a goal now, even though I didn't agree with it then, this year. But, yeah, it's possible to get a lot of the things done. And I asked that question, and the question came back was, we will probably end up hiring additional consultants to help make sure we can get these things done.
Do you think?
Go ahead.
Do you think in general the city uses too many consultants?
Well, I think when we're looking at these really big earthmoving projects, these things that we've never it's, it's just out of our league. We have to bring in like I didn't realize the depth of that pump lift station that was built on Rockdale Road, like how deep it was till I was standing at the top of that massive pit. I mean, we were 50 feet, it's 50 feet down in the ground. And it's like, that takes a lot of somebody's really good engineering that's that should be designing this. And I've asked that question, like with the Bee, with the Catfish Creek project. I was concerned that like phase three is one engineer and phase four is a different engineering firm. And it's like, are these two gonna talk to each other? Because once again, there's a point where they gotta connect. And engineering was Gus was saying, yes, that they will talk to each other. Because that's what they're supposed to do. I'm like, okay, great, because I just want to make sure because three and four are different stages and they're gotta connect somewhere. There's gotta be a point where they tie into each other. So that was important to me. I guess what citizens more, what I hear of is, well, why do we have to pay for a consultant to do a study when we can see that there's obviously a problem? I'm like, okay, I get that. But also it's, I say, sometimes it's best to have that unbiased opinion of somebody telling us like, you might want to do this a little differently. Sometimes the you you see the problem in front of you and you're so focused on it, you miss all the little peripheral details that can really affect the bigger picture of the project. So that's where, that's how I explain it, folks. And so that's where people, when they, oh, we're paying this much to do a study, da, 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 da. Well, we also state that we're data driven, that we want to have the numbers backing up from people. The one, the consultant mentioned, the consultant that we hired, when we did the work session for the building codes, for example, that how that process is going. She was impressed with the number of responses from the contractor. She said for, I remember in my notes, for a community of this size, she was utterly impressed. Because they, she's like, they've never had this many for the size of a community. And they've worked with larger communities, like she mentioned Buffalo, New Jersey, for example. Maybe it was upstate New York, maybe it was a town in upstate New York. Either way, we're, and just the fact that they've gotten that many responses tells me that folks finally got the message. You should really respond to these things because the more information we get, the more, the more responses we get from citizens, the more help we can get a better decision on these things.
Do you feel like the consultant's recommendations regarding parking in downtown Dubuque are that that those were accurate or, I don't know, you're in agreement with the path forward there?
Yeah, a parking, I, so one of the unique thing that I get to do with with my, with with our nonprofit is we go to other pride festivals. So we'll go to Iowa City, Cedar Rapids. And we'll try to make it to, we want to try to make it to other one, Angolina. In Iowa City, I was talking to a lady who was from Iowa City, who had just literally the weekend before came to Dubuque. And she said it to this. It's really weird. It's really sad that you've got this row of parking ramps. And it's like, it like blocks the view of everything. It almost builds a wall. And I'm like, no, it it does. It's imposing. It's, it makes it look like a fortress. And I believe at this point, we have enough parking, but I also, I'm also of the mindset of if a utilitarian structure like a parking ramp has reached its end life and it can't be in it, and it just and it's gonna cost a fortune to fix it, but it's not really being used. It's time to let it go. Get rid of it. And so I would, I like, one example in my brain that I've rattled around is the police department wants to get out of renting their facilities with the with the with the sheriff, with the Dubuque kind of sheriffs. Be like, well, we could take Iowa Street, tear half that ramp down and build a new fire or police building facilities. And they could use the other half of the ramp to park all their cars, and then their cars would always be in a parking ramp. And that wouldn't be terrible because we know that ramp needs a lot of attention because we just approved not too long ago, a whole bunch of money to fix it. But no, I feel we've got more than enough ample parking. I'm going to be intrigued when the date, when the new parking system is up and running, and we'll find out how much of it sometimes is it used. But I also, on the other hand, with this University of Dubuque coming on board, they will be taking over all seven floors of that parking ramp that's right behind them. That sits idle right now. So that will be used for the foreseeable future. But we also know that other ramps are not being used. We know that the Five Flags ramp, the one that's in the middle of the next on Main Street down there, it's not being used enough. People just don't want to walk there. It's sometimes it's even hidden. People even forget about it. So that's another situation. It's like, wow, we've got this nice ramp that nobody uses.
Okay, as we wrap up here, other questions, Ally, you wanna?
I had one more question. We talked a little bit earlier on about, you know, we have a number of folks who are running, talking about, you know, wanting to kind of move in a different direction with the city. One thing I hear some of them talk about, as well as somebody who you know, keeps track of, you know, reader comments and feedback and things like that, that I hear a lot about, it is around city spending and and the question of there, I think there are some folks who perceive that the city is not spending its money efficiently. I'm curious about kind of how you feel like we're doing as far as you know, obviously giving giving folks the, you know, needed community services, while also kind of getting the most bang for our buck and and paying attention to kind of those those taxpayer dollars.
Yeah, yeah. I, so because I live in one of the most, I I feel it's one of the most distressed neighborhoods. Last night I was talking to a younger lady. She was 41, three kids between the ages 12, 10, and I wrote it down intentionally. And she's going to be leaving town because of the fact that she can't it, it comes down to this, she feels like there's this disconnect with the little guy. Her kids were note on her 10, 12 and six. And there, the, her disappointment was the cost of living is getting too high. It's not becoming, it's becoming unaffordable. Thoughts about moving to South Carolina because the taxes are getting too high from the schools. Very much this distrust on the school issue is becoming another issue that we're talking about. But going back to what you're saying is, yeah, there was folks that were concerned that we're just, we're not, we're overspending, we're not spending the money the right way. Some people, it comes down to, they're just, they wish that we would like Eagle Point Park, they're disappointed that we haven't been spending money, where we're putting all this money in Comiskey. And I kind of explained to folks, well, Eagle Point Park is this old existing park that we're gonna have to do tree removal and such and structures, and they're historic, and we want them to stay the same. All those things cost a lot more than when you've got a simple flat piece of land. It's easier to take a blank slate and do more with it. Sometimes I feel like we we do the best that we can with what we have. I haven't really, there hasn't been anything that I can think of that it's like, boy, we're just I haven't really, there hasn't been anything that I can think of that it's like, boy, we're just wasting our money. We talk about, we've, we have, the, the city manager has, there's a department, I think what it's called, off the top of my head, where there are like services that they provide that, that we can't do and this kind of goes to some nonprofits. There has been a discussion that I've had with him to be like, well, I think we've helped out this nonprofit enough. This prop, it's been going on for Penn 15 years and if they can't seem to get their, their goal, their end goal, then they need to maybe go on their own or we just, if they fold, they fold. They, they've tried to do what they're doing. I think like, I know transportation is huge. We've got to figure that out and in talking with folks, they want to see more bus rides going later in the day and on the weekends. But to do that, you have to have a special dispatcher, an extra bus driver. So there's a lot more funds involved that we'd have to figure out how to make that work. I was kind of intrigued when we didn't, when we had, when we only had Sutton Down and only Flora, we had a second bus going around intentionally on the weekends to get people to, to there and it wasn't used as much as I thought it was going to be because I thought more folks would maybe want to use it to get around and it wasn't. Maybe things have changed in those two years since then. So we, we do need to look at, I feel like transportation is a huge one that we're just, we're kind of, we're not missing the mark, but we just need to get that more. Where we either need to get more buses, maybe smaller buses, maybe even go to look at van, an idea of more like bigger vans that could just be driven by anybody. So they wouldn't need to have a, a, the special CDL license, so.
Anything else, Danny, that we, we didn't get to today that you wanted to be sure to mention?
No, because it's always, the, the issues change so much every year and it's always, you, you try to think of like, oh, this is the big thing. Well, it's like, I've been talking about a grocery store since 2019. That's huge. Just keep doing, I, I want to keep doing what we're doing, but expanding what we can as we can because it's amazing how things just, every year will change because this shutdown, I don't know how that's gonna affect us. So far this morning, I think I got 10 emails about it and certain service, most of the services that the city can do aren't affected, but you know, how much longer that'll last? I don't know how much it could affect some of our programming, so. Like I said, that could totally change our, our, change our direction altogether, so.
On, on the grocery store, do you think that there is something that the city can and should do to incentivize a grocery store?
Yeah, we, we have pieces of land that could potentially work, I feel, but also it's, it's getting the right develop, the right bit, the right property owner who owns a big piece of land to just give like three acres or sell off three acres of it, that would be majorly helpful. But who knows with, with this building, I'm hoping with this building, the fact that we're gonna have incomes coming up in the next three or four years, that it'll show like, hey, you've got good demographics now, you've got good numbers. Let's start talking about like the possibility of another grocery store. Because that's the biggest thing is we, we need those demographics. I, I remember I'm on the board of Greater Dubuque and there was this big, there was this big presentation by, that Greater Dubuque paid for this firm to do and they presented all the numbers and it's like, I heard all this stuff from all these four years ago. And, and that's where, that's why all these is where it's at, not where I wanted it to be, but it's where it's at because of the demographics, because of the incomes.
Well, we really appreciate your time and, and your service in elected office. I know it comes with a lot of headaches, so thanks for all you've done and good luck the rest of the campaign.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks. Thanks, Danny.
Bye.